Some of this part of the way was almost gone, two thousand and twenty-one. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the yard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that me?
No, that's actually, we'll let you know here. Okay, no public comment. We have two sets of minutes today. We have the one from last week. There were three twenty-five for the Atchison County Joint Cities Commission Meeting Minutes. It has been adopted by the city of Atchison. The chairman entertained a motion to approve joint city meetings.
So moved.
It's the move by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Noel. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, the meeting last week, four twenty, everybody had a chance to review them. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
By Commissioner Noel, second by Commissioner Quinn, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, Commissioner Quinn.
Um, yeah, I don't have. Much right now, other than I was at Senior Village over the weekend and things are going good up there and. Just looking forward to the budget season and working with all the department heads to get through that.
Yeah, we're working hard on the budget already. Six month process.
It started, yeah, I had a special meeting of the area agency on aging. Monday because we found a opportunity for. On the, on the project of their building a new facility, they're, they're. Applying for getting tax credits. So they could utilize tax credits for their building and expense thereof. And so that's something that we're doing Monday, yesterday. Guess that's all I've, I want to take the time to urge everyone. There's plenty of vaccine, go get your vaccinations. And your second vaccinations. I think it's very important that we get to herd immunity. So if you're healthy and. Have no problems, go get them.
I have. What, uh, Fisher and all said. All of us to that is a big important thing. Okay, Shelley, haven't had you go on first. Budget first.
I was just seeking approval for the FY twenty-two budget and comp plan. I did discuss with you this morning, went over it with you. And I just wanted to make sure that it, that everybody was aware. That our funds come from the Kansas Department of Corrections. Our money is not through the county. And we write grants in order to get that money. And I'm just.
How you have this, how you're funded?
Yeah, that money comes from the Department of Corrections and I, I write a grant to get that money.
Well, you serve Atchison County, but it does not cost county taxpayers any money, is it?
It, it does not cost them any, any money. Now, we are provided IT services and. Housekeeping, maintenance, snow removal for our portion of the parking lot.
So. The document I have here attached to Jay, I don't see a signature.
I sent the signature page to Michelle and she was gonna print it out for you to sign.
What I have has been signed by, looks like you're.
Tom Weiser, who is our chairman.
I don't see.
There's not one underneath it?
Yeah, Board of County Commissioners. You would probably just have to sign above that or right below that.
Okay, so the chairperson's what else is.
He signs it as well as you.
Okay. So the chairman entertained a motion to allow the chairman to sign the budget in behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So by Commissioner Quinn.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Noel, discussion, hearing them, I assume you're ready to vote all in favor, signify by saying aye. I have. US three seventy-seven and action sports activity and fitness, a request for maintenance. This is, this expense comes from the one quarter percent set sales tax to pay for our ball fields. It is for twenty-five hundred dollars for the three seventy-seven Gaffingham and the ten thousand dollars for. The Atchison facility. I was amazed the other day I was out there for my grandchildren's soccer games. The number of people are using that facility is incredible. There's like all the soccer fields. So I'm glad this thing is in our community makes a big difference. I, the chairman entertained a motion to have the chairman sign, this disbursement.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes three to zero. Okay. Wes Lenter, Emergency Management Director.
Good afternoon, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. So I presented the commission with a purchase order for replacement of siren batteries for seven of the sirens located. In Atchison County, that's severe weather sirens or tornado sirens. The purchase order for the battery replacement was in the amount of five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Which is a normal yearly expense that we have for sirens and is budgeted. Do you have any other questions on that purchase order?
So these batteries, are you replacing part of them? Are you on a rotation with, or do they all get replaced every year?
No, so we replace usually four sirens a year with four ba- sets of batteries and four sirens. Every year, but we did not last year because we held off on expenses because due to COVID. So we're playing catch-up this year. We're doing three additional this year and two thousand twenty-one that we did not do in two thousand twenty. So that's why it's seven instead of four.
So the chairman entertained a motion to approve the purchase order to move out valley public safety in the amount of five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So moved.
So by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Noel, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes three to zero. Jackie Bowen. At the county combat slash wounded memorial proposal.
You, you probably don't, you might know the name, but probably not connected, but I was president of the court board in ninety-eight, ninety-nine. When we, the group decided that we wanted to do something on the riverfront and. We started with a stone, flagpole and a sign. And then we got a name, Veterans Memorial Park. And we dedicated it in ninety-nine. And then of course Seabirds went to Washington DC and got money and made it beautiful. And the columns down there list all the people that was killed in action. The county has went, which I was on the board for Revival Basin of the Moore Hall. Put up a sign on the opposite side, on the east side of the veterans that were killed in action. But we are forgetting some of the most important veterans. Combat wounded. That come back without limbs. PTSD, they had, in wheelchairs, they lost limbs, everything. So I looked on the internet and come up with. Different little things and I took it down to Wes and he designed this. And I'm going to ask you and the city to, to pay for it. Half a hand. Now this is a small stone, it's not, it's not really, if I stand up, it'll come up to about here on me.
Where's this, where's this location?
Veterans Memorial Park.
And I don't want to give the technicalities of, you have to approval of the riverfront board to do that or. Is that a separate thing?
Well, I don't know for sure what, where the city will want to put it, how they're gonna do that. But. There's plenty of room down there, you know, there's plenty of room for it. The only thing I would suggest is that. When you drive down the street, that you can see it. That you don't have to get out of the car and walk over. You can see it, you know? This is beautiful. This is a red, a beautiful red. And the reason it's red is because it's the blood that they shed. And it says, you know, on their different things for it. I'd like it to be bigger, but then that's up to you guys, you want to pay more money. Twenty-two hundred is, is the county share and the city share. I haven't been to city yet. I go down there next Monday. But I can't see why this purple heart is metal. You can do stone, but metal looks, it looks prettier with metal. So that's why I'm here, so you guys can.
Hey, thoughts, question?
I, I do think you need to check into that on that. Property there, because I know that there was a memorial, I know it wasn't part of the memorial that's there, but there was a. Something that went up for the guys that were killed at Bartlett.
Yeah.
And it was rejected at, at the first, which was a riverfront, I think. Proposal and, and it got moved elsewhere. I'm not for sure where that's at, so.
I think it's to the, to the south or the north, but yeah, because they got the, the, that theater type deal there. And everything over here is a park.
Okay, so I mean, that might, there might need to be some.
Well, we'd have to ask the city.
Yeah, city's probably more. Yeah, Casey, you have any thoughts?
So I love this idea. My, but I cannot commit to county funding for it right now. Just going into budget season and that, but I would love to help you raise the money. And get the word out for support for this. I just can't sit here as a county commissioner and, and agree to that. We had other folks come to us earlier this year asking for things that were turned down and we're just trying to be fair across the board. But I lo- I love this idea and I, I will do everything in my power to help support you.
There's a reason why we didn't go to other people.
And why is that?
When they donate, they want their name. And if you go donate, if everybody, and this would be a donator because people. You may not realize it, but through the years, Atchison County compared to all the other counties its size. At you send out those and all, we have more veterans, people sign up. To go to the service than any other county our size. That's, that documented, we did, we did that when we did the part down there. And so you don't want to have a bunch of names.
No, I, yep, I.
And it's not a whole lot of money. I mean, we can go with this size, I mean. This is forty inches high, then you add four inches for the other part.
Yeah.
Six inches, so it's gonna be about fifty inches high, about as tall as me.
Yeah.
Almost a little bit wider than me.
Yeah, well, and I, like I said, I completely agree and support you. I just. Every little request, even I, I agree, twenty-two hundred dollars is not a lot. But when you start doing twenty-two and a thousand and three thousand, like all of that adds up and we're looking at overages. On a bridge that's currently out for residents to get home to. And there's a lot of other things that come to mind. As far as funding goes, but again, I, I know you don't want donations, but anything I can do to help support you. I just can't vote right now to give county funds. And that's just me personally, one of three, so you might still be able to.
You know, I would hate to disappoint a lot of veterans out here.
No, I.
Just gonna hear about this and they're gonna be upset.
I.
I know. Jackie is sponsored by a, a veterans group. It's just sponsored by a veterans group, like the, you have to have.
I have not, no, we did not ask them either because then again. If you want, you gotta put your name and I don't think we need to do that with this, you know, this is, this is a special thing. This is for the men and women.
How about this? Can I ask you this? What if you were to do the men and women's names that were Atchison County veterans? And we could sponsor them, like if you could do a sponsor, so Travis Eichelberger is one that I know that got wounded. Like if, if you would sponsor and put the names of the Atchison County.
You don't have many there would be. There would not be room enough.
Well, I think it'd be kind of cool though and maybe it would grow in size.
We thought about that, but if you go back, because it's in all the wars, not just Vietnam or just the Korean War and all that, it's all wars.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a lot of names.
Yeah. I.
So.
Be cool.
Think I would, I'm kind of on board with what. Commissioner Quinn has said there, if it was maybe more a process where. More could be, a- and maybe at least asked, you know, if. They could have recognition on the flyer or when it's dedicated or something there that their name, not actually put their name on the memorial. I agree that that shouldn't be part of this, but. I think that if it was understood that all funders were not getting their name on that. But they would be acknowledged for their gift. I think that at that point, I'd be more willing to. Maybe make a difference or, you know, if, if there'd been more of a community effort into it. So. It's kind of a hybrid, I guess, of both.
I'm one hundred percent this idea. But I think it is community support.
That's.
I think it's a lot of words. And I think we would be allowed to maybe support it.
Absolutely.
Agree and secondly, to try to create a facilitation of sub-support for it also. So I think it just needs a little more work in its communication, but I, I think we could certainly. Consider to be interested to see what the city of Atchison is considering.
And see what their thoughts are on that.
I'd love to see some support from the two, you know, I don't think of two veterans groups in town at the FW and American Legion. They've done a, they've done a great job of keeping up the maintenance on the site, so.
I love that you're, you're using less budget to locally to, to provide this, that's, that's good. Would you mind leaving your contact info with Michelle so that I could contact you?
Okay, okay.
And visit about it some more.
Well, we'll see what we can do. I, at the FW, I'm sure they'll contribute some.
I'm not even talking about contributing to this, certainly just as much as like support from them, you know, that's. That they could contribute also, them saying we want this.
I'm sure the city will do their part though. I, I don't have no problems with them, you know, that's. So, then I go down there Monday.
Okay.
And if they okay it, you guys are gonna look bad.
We haven't. You know, let's see how it goes, I think.
Yeah, and it's not that we don't want to support it, we just can't use county tax dollars when we have obligations. That, and overages to pay for. In, in-house, like right now on the table, I know of.
And you know, I know that everybody's in a crunch, I know that. But when you look at this. These guys didn't stop to think about money. They went, they quit their jobs, they went to the service, they didn't hesitate one minute.
I.
And they come back. A good example of that is my father-in-law, who worked for Midwest. If you work for Midwest, you did not have to go to service because it was an alcohol plant. His wife told him he couldn't go because they had a lot of kids. So he went and told his wife he got fired. And he went, less than he went in World War Two.
Isn't it great to hear those stories?
Yeah, that's just one.
Yeah, talks out your heart.
You know, that's, that's the way it was back in, and there's still a lot of men that's out back today and women.
Well, and I know personally, I have a lot of veterans in, in my family. I married into a military family, so. As well as my own family, so we would need name recognition, but I'll, I'll talk to my husband and I'd be happy to give a. You know, a little bit if toward the project, because we definitely support it. I just can't, as a county commissioner.
Well, anything that anybody wants to give.
And we don't want our name, we don't need recognition just to help with your with our project.
Saying is, is anybody wants to donate to this cause can just take the money to Bird's Memorial.
Okay.
For the combat wounded.
Perfect.
And we'll just take it from there and see what happens.
Yeah.
And the more money we get, the bigger the stone.
That would be, that'd be awesome.
Sounds good to me.
Hey, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Jeff Shealy, Livwell Atchison.
Thank you.
Yeah, commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Hear your thoughts.
Great, hey, pleasure, welcome Commissioner Quinn to the county commission. Good to see you in that role. Welcome other commissioners, I've worked with all of you in one capacity. Were formed over the years and, and today I just wanted to touch base, I've been on Livwell of Atchison. Since, not since the beginning, Tom Wagner, Commissioner Wagner was, was on there at the beginning and got me involved with it. So I've been with the, the group quite a few years. And wanted to just give you a quick presentation of where we're at today. And just a real quick skim across the surface on the county health rankings that came out on April first this year. For Atchison County, and so Michelle, am I okay to share the screen, go over the PowerPoint presentation?
Bring share on Jeff, so you should be able to share the screen.
Okay.
Is this the same that you sent us, present us, Jeff?
I sent you the, the county rankings report. Let's take a look, are you guys able to see that?
Yes.
Are you seeing that? Okay, yeah, so what Eric, what I sent you was the, the county health rankings report. And that comes out annually every year on the first of, of April. And that's the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation, they're, they're affiliated with like University of Wisconsin, they've been coming out since two thousand and ten. And so I just wanted to send you the report that came out with them, that's the, I'm skimming across the surface. Each one of those you could dig deeper into, there's a lot, it's a lot of data to dive into and digest. And so I'll skim across the surface on some highlights with that here in a little bit, but I just wanted to give a presentation. Let you know where we're at. What you're seeing right now, this has been probably one of our most popular tools in our toolbox. This is the Atchison County Block Party Trailer. And we've had this, oh, I think for probably about three, not quite four years now. And we secured this trailer with everything in it through Blue Cross Blue Shield Pathways Grants a few years ago. And it was a brainchild with the YMCA, Lauren Affelt and Livel of Atchison. And this is a really cool tool, it's already been out twice this year. We, we kind of took a hiatus in twenty twenty because of. COVID concerns, but both ACCHS and Moore Hill Mount Academy have used it at their after proms. And what's fun about this trailer, if you don't know about it, you guys can explore it anytime. It's designed so that people, they want to use this in their block, they literally can pull it up. It has games, activities, physical activities, a grill, picnic tables. It's literally a block party in a trailer and it's been a pretty useful and pretty cool tool that. Kids, adults have enjoyed, so we're, we're already getting booked out already into almost June already with it. And we've been very happy, very proud of this. This is one of the big accomplishments I think we've had as a group. Something that seems as small and minimal as that's been pretty big, so we've been pretty happy with it. That was a picture of it last weekend after we set up at the after prom for Moore Hill. Let me just give a brief background, because I know some or most of you kind of know about us, but I wanted to give a quick background. Where we came out of, yeah, back in two thousand and ten, it was founded as a response to the. Annual, annual county health rankings, so Atchison Hospital's community leaders got involved. And, and that's where I first, when I was on the county commission, Tom Wagner was there from the beginning in two thousand and ten. And he had said, hey Jeff, maybe we should get involved with this, let's get, let's see what's going on. The county health rankings back in that two thousand and ten, we were the worst county in the entire state in Kansas, as far as like rankings across the board. So, good, bad, or indifferent, the community just said, we can't deal with this, let's look at the data, let's see how we can prove it. And that's kind of how it's founded. And then, then fast forward, so the group, community leaders met off and on over those next four years. In January of fourteen, it officially became an organization with five-one-C, three nonprofit status. In November of two thousand and fourteen. And then I was not on that, that board at that point, I was just kind of helping and put the pieces together. What happened was we figured out in fifteen, we needed to move the needle more. Because the county health rankings were trending worse in some areas, and so we hired. We were able to get funding from a lot of sources, that's including Atchison County, city of Atchison, the hospital, other private entity groups. Businesses to, to hire Detective Director, and that was Andrea Clements in two thousand and fifteen. And, and so as a group, when, when Andrea had started as, as the director, we had found out that. We were really trying to solve world peace with county health rankings. And that's a very big, vast blue sky to try and tackle. And so what we did over the next few years is we decided, let's concentrate our efforts. For citizens to, you know, just lead a healthy lifestyle, but live in a community. And so what, what you're seeing there is we focused in on specific things, on like healthy eating, active lifestyles. Tobacco-free living and personal mental well-being. And you're seeing the parentheses, those are CDRR factors, chronic disease risk reduction. And I think some of you were at the community leadership breakfast, this is a minute of years back, there was a Dr. Elizabeth Avola that was there. From KU Health Systems, and she said that eighty percent. Of all diseases come from like three to four primary things and, and the CDR factors that we're concentrating on. Physical inactivity, tobacco-free living, healthy habits, those are kind of a root of a lot of diseases, long-term. And so hence we focused in on that and we're having some really good success with it. We've got some pretty good grant dollars over the years to do that and made a big impact reverse. Health rankings that take years, if not decades to reverse, so it doesn't happen overnight. And, and so, so fast forward here to March of two thousand and twenty-one. Andrea had a good opportunity to go work for the Chamber of Commerce, and so. I'd been on the board about three years with Livel of Atchison. And so I saw it as an opportunity to take up where Andrea left off. Knowing that it was probably gonna, you know, live or die, you know, at, at some point, and so I didn't, didn't want to see that torch drop. Because I have a lot of vested interest in the community. And so where we're at right now, as far as like board members, you can see the board members on there, so Lindsay Hansen. She's Vice Principal at the high school, she's our president now, Sean Crittenden. Ryan Moody from BC, head football, basketball coach, Lauren Affelt, the YMCA. Abby Bartlett, mayor, she was a city of Atchison appointee. And then we had, had requested an Atchison County government appointee, but we haven't gotten any from your board. So if you guys, there's still standing offer there, if either one of you or somebody you want to point, wants to be on our board. We love to have good people across the board. And, and so over the years, what we found, we have three primary sources of, of funding here with Livel of Atchison. Primarily grants. Uh, primarily grants, uh, we've been pretty active in, in, uh, grant applications, uh, not only just by ourselves, but with other groups, other nonprofits. Um, so there's good success with that. Uh, fundraising, uh. The only fundraising we've typically done in the past, we've always had a wonderful farm-to-table event, which unfortunately we did not have last year. Uh, because of COVID, um, but what I'll tell you is that, um, there is some, uh, planning possibly to have something this fall. Um, knock on wood, hopefully, uh, things become back to normal at some point. And then obviously, uh, from Atchison County, um, we do get, uh, a small chunk of funding from Atchison County. And that's been a pretty stable and sustainable for us over the years. And, um, and then right below that, uh, since two thousand and fifteen, uh, we've done a lot of things. They tried to highlight the big things. Uh, tobacco-free parks, uh, Atchison County, uh, was really good to adopt, uh, tobacco-free parks. And so that's at any parks that, uh, Atchison County, Kansas, um, has. And that was kind of a big deal. There was a, not controversy, but people not very happy with that. Uh, method, um, or doing that, but we're seeing some pretty good success with that. And we're seeing a catch, uh, some steam around surrounding counties that took on that. Um, that, that they saw that and that worked very well. And so that's been very popular, um, as well as, um, in the city of Atchison itself. Um, we did get tobacco-free parks within about a hundred-foot zone of all kids' playgrounds. It's a little bit tougher to get broad. Across all the parks with City of Atchison, but we were able to get that accomplished. We've also helped with, uh, physical, adult physical activity. That's one of the areas I'll show you here in a little bit that we score low in, in Atchison County. But, uh, we've also increased the physical activity, um, through events, sponsorships, um, walk with a doc. That's been pretty popular over the last few years with YMCA and the hospital. Uh, but trying to get those out there and get, and get healthy, um, just getting some physical activity. Um, you know, as well as access to like healthy foods, uh, we worked with a lot of restaurants and grocery stores and the farmer's market. Here in Atchison County, uh, over the last few years to get access either through, um, uh, things to keep foods fresher, et cetera. We've worked very hard, uh, for those things. And those have been some of the big key things. Um, just so, just that good overall policy advocacy. And then, um, I did, uh, I did look back since two thousand and fifteen, just in outside grant dollars alone. Um, Livwell has, has contributed about three hundred thousand dollars to local businesses, uh, to improve their access to like healthy foods or healthy living. To schools and other nonprofits. So we have also helped a few other nonprofits that were doing something, but didn't quite have the funds to push through that. So that was, that was kind of a big number. I, I wasn't sure about that, uh, but I had to look that up myself. So, um, let's fast forward to, um, to today, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Let's just take a quick look at the county health rankings. So what you're looking at, and you can, I know, uh, those are reports, Eric, you were asking about. That's, that's the summary of this. I tried clipping out, so it's a little bit bigger to see. Um, the health rankings are two main criteria, health outcomes and health factors. And, um, health outcomes, um, so wrap your head around this, health outcomes are a direct result of the health factors. And so, uh, Atchison County historically, we haven't been too bad. Um, you can see on the screen that, uh, we're, we're in that, that top, you know, fifty percent of counties. So we, we ranked fifty-one, uh, out of a hundred and five. So we're doing pretty decent with that. Um, the health factors, uh, what you're seeing that rank is not as good. Uh, we're one of the, the least, uh, healthy in the state with health factors. Those encompass a lot of things and I'll show you here in a little bit and you have those reports too. That's a lot of stuff that you have to dive into and dig into. A lot of it centers around socioeconomic typically is what we see. But the, the health factors, um, are pretty deep. So, so not so good, but I will tell you. In a little bit, we, uh, we're seeing some very good positives with the health factors, even though the rankings haven't moved a whole lot in the right direction for us there. Um, so the health outcomes really come down to like two main things, that length of life and quality of life. And, um, and so Atchison County in that first column, um, as well as the, the top US performers and versus the state. Um, so, so typically what we've seen over the years is that, um, we've done pretty decent on this. The, the best ranking, as you can see, is, is we ranked forty-four of a hundred and five counties back in two thousand and seventeen. But just a few years ago, we ranked eighty-nine. And, um, so we've really seen, seen the, the range on this one swing quite a few ways. Um, what I'll tell you at fifty-one this year, I think that's a very good, um, trend that we're seeing. Um, a- as a county, we don't have like a ton of resources to make that needle move as fast as like counties like Johnson County. Lebworth, Riley, Douglas, those are the top, in the top five almost every year in the state. Just a lot more resources that they can go after that. Um, and, and some of them have been working on it pretty actively a little bit longer than us. So those are the two main things on the health outcomes. Now, the, the health factors, um, are into like four main buckets, um, or categories. Yeah, you've got, uh, the healthy behaviors, um, which range from like adult smoking, adult obesity, excessive drinking. Uh, to clinical care, who has access to, to dentists, musicians, et cetera. Uh, socioeconomic factors, that's one of the biggest, uh, ones that have impacted pretty much all of these. As well as physical environment. Um, it's kind of interesting, physical environment, we used to have like horrible scores as a county. Um, especially when it came to like drinking water violations. And that's really changed dramatically over the last like five to 10 years. We've had a lot of, uh, good water quality things addressed, um, as a county overall. And so, um, so areas that, that I'm seeing some trends that are looking good, that it's hard to look at are the adult smoking. Uh, we are above the state average and the national average. We are seeing that trending down. Um, which is good. Excessive drinking, we have a flat line with the state of Kansas. Um, we used to be, we used to be about two to three points higher in the state. That's a good trend in the right direction. Um, adult obesity, we've been kind of stable. That's been a tougher one to do that. So you're seeing forty percent of, of citizens in Atchison County are obese. And, um, that's way above the state average as far as, um, national average too. So that's been, that's been something that's really tough that we've been trying to work on good physical activities. It's not just about, um, building trails, which we've helped do. You've got to get adults to those trails and the walk with the doc program was very good. So, um, we've been really trying to address that, working with local employers, um, to increase that physical activity is good too. Um, the socioeconomic factors, and it's circled and highlighted, this usually impacts a lot of stuff, um, pretty much everything across the board. And so, and, and you've all have, have looked at it. It's, it's been a glaring thing. The, the unemployments. Our unemployment rates have been horrible in Atchison County as long as I've ever recalled. We're always above state average. We're always above the region. That's just something that, um, dings, um, us on the county health rankings. They look at it as a factor impacting our health as it should. Um, so unemployment, um, we've also looked at children poverty. We're way above the state average on that. Um, you know, violent crimes were not too bad. We usually score pretty decent in that. Um, in, in income inequality, you know, those are just big areas. Um, children, single-parent households, you go down the list. Most of the, the socioeconomic factors really have a direct tie-in with the, uh, the clinical care, health behavior. So, um, those are kind of the things that, that we've seen from that perspective on that. So I'm seeing some trends out of these in the right direction. Um, I, I think the unemployment numbers, we've trend, trending a little bit lower than what we normally have, even though we're above what other counties are doing. I'm sure you guys are trying to find out ways to combat that. Um, especially when, you know, there are jobs out there, but maybe connecting those pieces to, uh, to get people into those, into those jobs. And, uh, because I mean, it costs you less, uh, obviously as county commissioners, it costs the county less, you know, the healthier we are. Because, uh, the unhealthier counties are the ones that are struggling to survive. Um, they just don't have access. Um, to, um, good access, critical care, as well as other type of factors. So that income really has a direct impact, um, as far as economics and, and getting people to come to your county. Yeah, what we've seen is that, uh, the trend is if you're not a healthy county, um, you're less apt to lose population. Um, and the state of Kansas is no, no stranger that. We've seen trends of, of moving out of the state of Kansas over the last decade. Um, just for various reasons, closer to proximity to, to larger, larger metro areas. But, um, it's something that, um, that's definitely impacting us at all. So, um, now, uh, where do we go from here in two thousand and twenty-one? Um, I came up with, with four things and, and our board's been really, uh, good to work with on this. Uh, we're actively looking at strategic partnerships here in two thousand and twenty-one. And when I say strategic, we've got a lot of nonprofit groups here in our county and working together more with each other. I think would benefit everybody. Um, so we're looking at some good, um, formal, uh, strategic partnerships with groups. So we can, um, not replicate that wheel over and over, but maybe, um, work with each other in, in how, have more of a sense of direction and get things accomplished quicker. Um, with less resources, I think would be great. Um, increase community awareness. Uh, we're going to actively increase our community awareness. COVID. I would say kind of put us, um, on hold last year, um, as far as doing things in the community. But, uh, being out in the community through social media, um, public events, I think we're gradually seeing that, uh, pick up. Um, obviously we, the trailer is picking up steam for us too with two after proms already. Um, working with local elected officials, I think is critical. So, um, giving, um, you timely and, uh, better reports so you can see what's going on with this instead of just showing up once or twice a year. Um, as well as like the other cities I have meeting scheduled with, um, cities in, in the rest of the county. Um, with elected officials to get in front of them, to see how we can help them out. And then, uh, obviously active grants and sustainability opportunities. Uh, we're always looking for ways to make our community better. And so we are actively pursuing, um, local, state and federal grants. Um, and so sometimes we have access to stuff that, uh, that even the county doesn't have access to just because of the type of, uh, uh, entity that we are. And so, um, that's pretty much what I have. I don't want to keep you guys too long. Do you guys have questions for me or any of this information we went over?
Yeah, your, your schedule to come on your budgets for two thousand and eleven to request additional funds for the following, for two thousand and twenty-two, the County of Atchison. I, I've been really ask a serious question, Jeff. If other governments and other people within our community aren't willing to share in those. Things, as far as I know, the County of Atchison is the only governing body to be participating with any kind of financial assistance. Yeah, I don't believe the hospitals contributing any financial assistance. So I'm going to ask those questions. Why are we doing it and everybody else? That's more of a community-based.
Sure.
Uh, and that's going to be a real tough question because we're really trying to look at all those kind of expenses, even if they seem small. Uh, they add up to a lot, a large amount of money at the end of the day. And, you know, you guys are missing in action in two thousand and nineteen, I mean, two thousand and twenty. Uh, during the biggest health crisis of our times, uh, so I mean. These, these PowerPoints are really good and I think they provide good information and I support everything you said there. But the financial portion of it, there's going to be a real question when it comes to our meeting on the eleventh, so.
Sure.
I'd like to see, have a coalition of people who are willing to participate in it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. Um, and we're in contact with, uh, other organizations like us across the state. Um, it's pretty common that, uh, that you do see, uh, counties typically funding, uh, other organizations similar to what you guys do. Like I said, our majority of our funds are typically through grants, um, as well as fundraising. And then obviously, um, you know, a subsidy from the county, obviously. So you're going to like, want to look at like impacts. What's the economic impact? What are you doing with those tax dollars? I completely get it. I sat in your chair many times trying to figure that in question. And, and so what I should say to you is that we are working pretty hard to work with other entities in the, in this community. I think what we've seen in Atchison County over the years is a lot of nonprofits have built up, um, or other entities. What are they, um, really doing to work together? And usually one of the hardest parts is getting past those little silos that other entities have built up. Um, I'm not afraid to ask them to work together more. Um, things that you could help us out at the county level or, or other groups that you work with. Um, suggest that, hey, maybe we have a good discussion with each other on, on doing stuff. Um, one of the things that was kind of disappointing that I found out here, it was too late to do anything about it. Um, CDRR grants, uh, Northeast Kansas Environmental Services did not apply for that grant. I, I think the person that administered that left or was leaving. And we had no idea about that. And, and we actually, out of the five counties, we've done more with tobacco prevention, cessation, reduction. Than that entire group over the last five years. And we didn't have a chance to even apply for those grant dollars. So stuff like that, if we can have conversations with those groups, Multi-City Health Department, everybody, we need to really start working together because. You know, if everybody's on the same ship, we can get a lot more accomplished.
Jeff, was that Jennifer Haines? Is she leaving? I didn't.
I don't think she's there anymore, Eric. All I know is that, um, she was, I was notified she was leaving and Northeast Kansas Environmental Services, which handled that grant. Um, chose not to apply for that grant. That was over forty-four thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, that nobody got in this five-county region. Because i- if we would have known about it, we would have applied for it, Eric. We, I talked with KDHE and they said it was too late. Uh, we had no idea that, that that didn't even get applied for. That's nor, I think, are you on that board still or who's on the board?
And that, that never came to my attention through that.
Okay. You might ask that question of them to see where that went because, um, I have talked with KDHE. Um, I have some really good contacts with them and then we can get that ball rolling for us. Um, going forward as far as, uh, Livwell to try and go after some of those, those dollars. Because that's what a lot of the Livwell organizations do. They get a lot of those CDR grants, go after that.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot for showing, uh, for coming on, Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys, if you guys have any questions, you got my contact information there, let me know, um, whatever I can do for you guys. And, uh, we'll see you, I think, in two weeks. Is that correct?
The eleventh, whatever. I guess that's two weeks.
Yeah, awesome. Have a great race your day. Thank you.
Joe Snyder. Rose is rich, silver, tether, chip and seal, they're open.
Yes. Like Michelle. Is she still in there?
I am.
Yep, I can't see anybody so, or see her, so.
For the chip and seal, the seal bids enclosed, um, the only one I received is Vance Brothers. Um, and we checked the box and received our mail. So this is the only one that I have received. I'm going to do my best to try to read through it, so. Project total that I have here on the, um, proposal, five hundred twenty-five thousand, seven fifty-four, twenty-four.
I would, uh, recommend that I review these and look at it. And then come back Tuesday and, uh, give everybody a chance to look at them. And I, I want it.
You only have one bed, is that all?
Yeah, and that's something that, uh, it was sent out local. I talked to Michelle this morning. Kim and I have talked about it. We've got to find a way to get more people involved in bidding. So that is a concern. It's just like on the truck last time, we talked to four different dealerships and only, they all were going to and only one sent in. So, uh, we're reaching out to the people we know. We're going to have to try to find a list of, of more people to try and get a more competitive, uh, bid package for the county.
Okay, is that a surprising bid or very first glance or?
Well, I need to get my calculator and do a little bit of dividing. Let's see.
Well.
Out at Eric.
Uh, we don't need to do that right now. I just wondered.
That's, that's why, that's why I wanted to look at it.
Sure.
I don't think it's probably crazy. I think it's fairly aligned with what we had talked about earlier during our road plan.
Okay. Any, anything else today, Joe?
No, the only other thing is I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that even if we do get selected for the 286 project, that we still need to, whether we do or not, look at alternative ways of coming up with additional funds to help fund the road plan. I just don't, I don't want us to forget that. Did everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't want us to forget that we've still got to try to do whatever we can to come up with, with the funds to get some of this stuff going.
On that note, will we hear from that grant?
I was told the middle of May and Joe, when I talked to him the week before last, before he was sick all last week, he asked me if I had heard anything from him. And I said, no, whether that's good or bad, I don't know. So, but the middle of May is what I was told. And as soon as, as soon as we find something out, believe me, you guys will, will know as soon as we find out. That's, that's all I've got today.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Council updates, county councilor's not here. Executive session, I hope we have a Dean for executive session today. Any public comment?
Yes, Chairman Bauer, my name is Michael Cockelman. I was here a few weeks ago and, and expressed to you my concern about transparency and government and the fact that we need to have transparency in government. And I ask you to consider combining the workshop with the meeting because really the important discussion occurs during the workshop and the meeting is really just a vote. Sometimes people don't even understand why you vote a certain way because they don't have the context. The concern I have is today in the workshop, you said that the workshop is not a public meeting. And that's not true. The workshop is a public meeting. That is a violation.
Let me correct you. It's not a, it's not a public participating meeting. It's not a public hearing. It's. It's absolutely.
Right, it is open to the public and you should be very careful with your word selection. You said it's not a public meeting. It is a public meeting. It's subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. But when you, when you're loose with your language, it's troubling to people because they think they can't participate or they can't be there. Of course, people are entitled to be at the workshop and it's false to say otherwise. What you should say is there is not a public comment section at the workshop. That's all that, that you can say about that. Otherwise, it's a violation of coma. But loose language like that is just unacceptable. You're the chair, you have to be very precise. We have to have transparency and you should combine these two meetings in any of them.
I appreciate.
The, the workshop isn't recorded, by the way, so we can't go back and put it to context to it, Chairman Bauer, but that's what you said this morning.
Thank you for the.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I'm always happy to do so, Chairman Bauer. I was happy to educate you on Senate Bill 40 after it was passed and, and you had it for three weeks and it didn't understand it, but thank you.
Anything else today?
There's some chats up there. Actually, those are, Mike just wanted to make sure that he was.
Is that all the name, Michael?
I thought Arthur Sewell said. And he just said, thank you for all your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. Okay, anybody else have a public comment? Okay, save none. We'll move right along and the chair will entertain a motion for adjourned at 1:53, 1:54 PM. Almost.
Second.
Move the second and all the favors identified, I say a lie. I.